I'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. I want to welcome everyone. Tonight, I'm going to ask Councilmember Corky Welch to give the invocation and also lead us in the place of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us all together here this evening. We just ask, Lord, that you bless each and every one of us individually, and, Lord, bless us as a group, as a council, as the leaders of the city. We ask that you just be with us as a city, for this great city that we have, Lord, and help us to continue to prosper in times as we have for many, many years. We thank you, Lord, for all of the blessings that you've given us as a city. We thank you for our public safety officers, the fire and police, and all the employees of the city. And, Lord, we just ask that you bless this meeting, the decisions that we make here this evening, that they are there for the best of the citizens, best of the city, and in your honor, Lord. We just ask that you be with each of us as we leave these premises this evening. Carry us home safe. Keep us safe on the way home, in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Item 2 is agenda changes, and we do not have any. 3 is Merrill report. A is 2018-356, proclamation and recognition of Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2018, Fielding Lewis Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution. And tonight, we have from the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, Ann Amy, Joan Bloom, Carol Palmer, Jennifer Bennett, Vicki Hoffman, Marguerite Cagle, is that right? Anybody else? If y'all would please step forward, I'm going to ask that Councilmember Corky Welch to read that proclamation, and then we will get to... I think we see y'all a couple of times a year, maybe, for different things, so we're glad to have y'all.
Once a year, anyway.
Carol Palmer is the Constitution Week Chairman. That's... You know why I know that? Because Ms. Bennett wrote this down for me, so...
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming this evening. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna for Constitution Week, whereas September 17, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I am max bacon by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Smyrna and the state of Georgia do hereby proclaim this week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Remembering the lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my seal and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this the fourth day of September in the year of the Lord, 2018. Am max bacon. Before I come down and present this, if a couple of you would like to step up and tell a little bit about, and I know this term because Jennifer told me, your primary patriot, you know, that's... I know that's important, a part of the organization, and we'd love to hear a little bit about your patriot.
Yes. My patriot and ancestor, who I found so that I could join the DAR, was Swan Rambo. And his grandfather came from Denmark in 1642, and this line has been in America since that time. He is from South Carolina, and he was a true patriot. Thank you.
We'd like to hear everyone's...
Good evening. I'm Ann Amy. My patriot is Thomas McWilliams. He was the captain of the Sloop Molly from Maryland.
I'm Joan Bloom, and it's pretty interesting. In order to get into Daughters of the American Revolution, you have to prove that your ancestor, and it can't be an uncle, it can't be a cousin, it has to be a direct lineal descendant, so your great-great-great-grandfather either gave aid or fought in the Revolutionary War. So the patriot I came in on was John Hounshell, and he fought in Virginia, and one of his battles was the Cherokee Expansion.
I'm probably the only Yankee in the room. My patriot, I... Welcome, thank you. My patriots are from Pennsylvania, Ponchatan area, and it is a father and son, Daniel and Daniel Ogden, Matthew and Daniel Ogden, and they have another son, Daniel. They're from Pennsylvania, and they served in the Revolutionary.
Good evening. My name is Marguerite Cagle, and I am a descendant of John Hawkins, North Carolina. He was civil service, away from the civil service for three years, but can't prove that he was actually in the fighting. But again, after that, he was back in the court system in North Carolina. Thank you.
Okay, so I have the private in the bunch. His name was Jesse George from South Carolina, and he was one of Marion's men. That's Francis Marion, who was known as the Swamp Fox. And interestingly enough, on this day in 1780, the Swamp Fox scored a big win for the American Revolution in South Carolina, and I think a number of men joined after that, but he was Private Jesse George, my fourth great-grandfather. Thank you.
And we enjoy every year when y'all come and tell us about your organization and also share with us how you became a member, so we look forward to seeing y'all again next year. So Corky?
Thank you all for coming out this evening, and someone to present this, too.
Yeah. Yeah. And to find out more about Daughters of the American Revolution, they have a website that you can go to, but it's... Thank y'all so much for the time that you put in and spent. Item 4, land issues, zones, and annexation. We do not have anything. Previous licenses, nothing. 6, formal business. A resolution 2018-06, approval of resolution 2018-06 extending the emergency 9/11 surcharge and allowing to the state of Georgia to collect on the city's behalf. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Effective January 1st, 2019, the state of Georgia, under a 911 authority, will begin centralized collection of E-911 charges. The current $1.50 per line surcharge will remain the same, but will be collected by the state and distributed to local jurisdictions. Staff does recommend approval of this resolution, which must be affirmed annually to continue the $1.50 charge on telephone subscribers, so that is the reason why it's on the agenda for this evening.
I'll ask that Mr. Corky Welch take care of this issue. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Ms. Adler Jones explained it pretty well. This is simply an approval of a resolution that we are required to do by law. With that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolutions 2018-06, approval of the resolution extending the emergency 911 surcharge and allowing the state of Georgia to collect on the city's behalf.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved 6-0. And for the record, Mr. Derek Norton is not here tonight. He's absent. He's on vacation, I believe. Item B, under formal business, resolution 2018-07, approval of resolution 2018-07 to collect prepaid wireless 9/11 surcharges in the amount of $1.50 per retail transaction and is outlined in OCGA 46-5-134.2B1. Ms. Jones, the background.
House Bill 75 regarding 911 charges was altered. The bill authorizes local jurisdictions to impose prepaid wireless 911 charges for $1.50 per retail transactions occurring within the jurisdiction of the public safety answering point. All revenue will be remitted to the Georgia Department of Revenue as the centralized collection point and distributed to the jurisdiction within which the surcharges were collected. Staff does recommend approval of this resolution.
Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is simply an approval of a resolution required by the state of Georgia. With that, I make a motion to approve resolution 2018-07 to collect prepaid wireless 911 surcharges in the amount of $1.50 per retail transaction as outlined in OCGA 46-5-134.2B1.
We have a motion to approve this resolution. Get a second? Got a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item C is resolution 2018-08, approve resolution 2018-08 to adopt the updated hazard mitigation plan required for compliance with federal regulations for the Smyrna emergency management. The background, Ms. Jones, please.
This hazardous mitigation plan is an effort, a joint effort, between Cobb County Emergency Management Agency and all municipalities within Cobb County. This plan is updated every five years, and in order to stay in compliance with federal regulatory requirements, Smyrna's emergency management is required to have an adopted hazardous mitigation plan in place. Again, the city of Smyrna accomplishes this through partnership with Cobb County, and the fire department does recommend this mitigation plan for approval.
Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you. Again, Ms. Adler Jones explained this is a required resolution by the state, required to be updated every five years. With that, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-08 to adopt the updated hazard mitigation plan required for compliance with federal regulations for the city of Smyrna emergency management.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6D, 2018-370, award RFP 19004, Lake Court Park Storm Drainage Rehabilitation to the lowest bidder, Tucker Grading and Holling, 102 Roberts Way, Canton, Georgia, 30114, for $206,031.65 from the Water CIP Fund and authorized the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The city of Smyrna requested bids to construct Lake Court Park Storm Drainage Rehabilitation. The scope of work includes removal of existing twin CPM cross-drain piping and apportionment structures, replacement of the RCP, and construction of gap-in basket plunge pool and associated site work. I'm sure Frank can give you more detail about what those are. Six bids were received. The purchasing manager, Public Works, and Kroy Engineering recommends award to the lowest bidder, Tucker Grading and Holling, in the amount of $206,031.65. This project is being funded out of the Water CIP Fund.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would... If anyone has any question about where the Lake Court Park is, it's behind the what used to be a $3 car wash there on South Cobb Drive, but it's a nice, small park back there, but we've got some drainage problems. I'd like to make a recommendation of award for RFP 19-004 for Lake Court Park Storm Drainage Rehabilitation to the lowest bidder, Tucker Grading and Holling at 102 Roberts Way, Canton, Georgia, 30114, in the amount of $206,031.65 to be funded from the Water Capital Improvements Program Fund and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
I have a motion to award the lowest bid. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6E, 2018-374, award RFP 19-006, traffic signal and fiber adjustment to the lowest bidder, Bass Signal Corp., 251 Industrial Park Drive, Millidgeville, Georgia, for $244,900, funded by the 2016 SPOSS and authorized the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The city of Smyrna requested bids for adjustment of traffic signal and fiber on various roadways within the city. Only one bid was received. The purchasing manager, Public Works, and Kroy Engineering recommends award to the only bidder, Bass Signal Corporation, in the amount of $244,900. This project is being funded out of the 2016 SPOSS.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a motion to approve item number RFP 19007 for the replacement of... I'm sorry. Item number 19-006 for traffic signal and fiber adjustment to the lowest bidder, Bass Signal Corporation at 251 Industrial Park Drive, Millidgeville, Georgia, in the amount of $244,900, funded by the 2016 SPOSS program, authorized the mayor to execute all related documents.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item F, 2018-377, approval to award RFP 19-007 for the replacement of eight cardiac monitors in the amount of $220,647.75 funded from CIP to, I guess this is... Looks like Psycho, but that's not. Control Inc. at 181181 Willow Drive, Northeast, Redmond, Washington, and to allow finance to amend the budget appropriately and to authorize the mayor to execute necessary documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The city of Smyrna Fire Department budgeted to replace eight cardiac monitors, defibrillators. The preferred brand is LifePack 15V4 from Physio Control for consistency in equipment with regards to training, efficiency, and capability within the city and county. Physio Control is the sole source vendor for this product. It is the recommendation of the purchasing manager and the fire department that the cardiac monitors/defibrillators be awarded to Physio Control in the amount of $220,647.75, and allow finance department to amend the budget and authorize the mayor to execute related documents. This purchase is currently budgeted in the fiscal year 2019 CIP Fund.
Mr. Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the Finance Committee has considered for the last three or four years, our capital improvement program, we have fashioned a plan with estimates, and now, as we get down into the purchases, we can actually refine more the available product to fulfill our needs. This is one of those. We're going to just have a minor adjustment on this item and the other, the next one in order to fit within our capital improvement program budget. It fits, and I wanted to move approval to award RFP 19-007 for the replacement of eight cardiac monitors in the amount of $220,647.75 funded from the capital improvement program to Physio Control Inc., 81181 Willow's Road, Redmond, Washington, and to allow finance to amend the budget appropriately and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion to approve this funding. Get a second for Ms. Blackburn? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6G, 2018-378, approval to award RFP 19-008, Fire Engine 5, in the amount of $548,727, funded by the Vehicle Replacement Fund to 10-8 Fire Safety Equipment, 1591 Collier Road, Forsyth, Georgia, 31029, utilizing the Fire Rescue Group Purchasing Organization, GPO, through the National Purchasing Partners Government Division, NPPGOV, to allow finance to amend the budget appropriately and to authorize the mayor to execute necessary documents. The background, Ms. Jones?
Fire... Smyrna Fire Engine 5 is beyond its service life and is scheduled to be replaced in this current fiscal year, 2019. Fire Engine 5 is a 2001 American Le France fire engine. The scheduled replacement will allow Smyrna Fire Department to purchase a 2019 Pierce Velocity fire engine as the replacement vehicle. The 2019 Pierce Velocity pumper will be purchased from 10-8 Fire and Safety Equipment using the National Purchasing Partners Government Division Cooperative contract. It is the recommendation of the purchasing manager and the fire department that this project be awarded to 10-8 Fire and Safety Equipment in the amount of $548,727, and that the finance department be allowed to amend the budget appropriately. This particular purchase is budgeted in the fiscal year 2019 Vehicle Replacement Fund.
Mr. Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm proud to offer this amendment to award this contract per our long-term planning for replacement of vehicles. I think originally we had estimated $650,000 as the cost of a vehicle of this type, so we're having some cost savings. We did see a little variance in that. We're adjusting the budget accordingly, so I move approval to award RFP 19-008 to Fire Engine 5 in the amount of $548,727, funded from the Vehicle Replacement Fund to 10-8 Fire Safety Equipment, 1591 Collier Road, Forsyth, Georgia, 31029, utilizing the Fire Rescue Group Purchasing Organization, GPO, through the National Purchasing Partners Government Division, NPPGOV, and allow finance to amend the budget appropriately and authorize the mayor to execute the necessary documents.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approval of the August 20th, 2018 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the August 20th, 2018 pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval to allow road closures for the Smyrna Open Streets event on October 14th, 2018, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Road closures include portions of Powder Spring Street Southeast, Hughes Street Southeast, Belma Place Southeast, Belma Boulevard Southeast, and Ward Street Southeast.
Here, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start now with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance HR Committee is working on a tentative schedule, has not been solidified yet, of September 13 to wrap up our report. As soon as that is finalized, it will be formally proposed and posted in all appropriate locations.
Is that it? Thank you. Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for forming the new education committee, myself, Ms. Marilyn Blackburn, and Ms. Susan Wilkinson, who also serve on the committee. Focus is to support existing education, partners in education, such as the Smyrna Education Foundation, Campbell High School Education Foundation, and other existing and future community groups. As we all know, the number one key for successful long-term communities is good schools. Good schools benefit everybody, regardless of your children attend the schools. It's good for property values and keeps families here living in Smyrna longer, attracts businesses, and builds deeper community bonds. It's obviously clearly the county's responsibility to fund the schools, provide adequate classroom space, quality teachers, and school administrators. But we, we being the city of Smyrna, residents, local businesses, have a role to play in supporting and strengthening our schools. We have the ability to offer creative, flexible programs that are... city's new youth council program, and help support other various outreach programs at Campbell High School, supported by Dr. Walker. So, appreciate the opportunity, and it'll be a great program. Thank you.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a couple of things to announce. I'd like to announce that the Smyrna Police and Fire Departments will host a nine eleven remembrance ceremony at the Twentieth Century Veterans Memorial, uh, in downtown Smyrna on September the eleventh, two thousand eighteen. The public is invited to attend the ceremony, which will begin promptly at eight thirty A M. and last approximately forty-five minutes. Um, this year, local first responders are extending an invitation to the community to join the members of the Smyrna Fire Department and Smyrna Police Department in paying tribute to the victims of nine eleven. This year's ceremony will include brief speeches from public safety officials and local, local elected officials, some musical presentations, an honor guard presentation, and the laying of a wreath at the memorial. Um, this is the first time since the attack, the city of Smyrna, public safety personnel have held an official ceremony. Over the years, local first responders have elected to honor this special day in their own way to preserve the memory of the lives lost. Um, also, I will, I'd like to announce that, um, in the Smyrna Library Meeting Room on Sunday, September the ninth, at, uh, three o'clock P M. to four o'clock P M., the Atlanta Symphony Orchestra Principals, Christina Smith, flute, and Elizabeth Remi Johnson, harp, will present an afternoon recital of flute and harp music. The program includes a wide variety of works from American composers to the tango music of Astor Pizzolo. Uh, the program also includes descriptions of their instruments and the musical selections and time for questions and answers. It's suitable for all ages, and this event is free of charge and open to the public. And if you want more information, you can visit our website. I'd also like to thank the mayor for, um, for the, um, another committee that he recently put together, and it's the Transportation Committee, uh, which I, I will be chairing, and I will, um, be on that committee with Andrea Bluestein and Corky Welch, and the focus will be on infrastructure development, multimodal plan policy, defining types applicable for city of Smyrna, and for next, uh, SPOLOST project list, and work closely with the staff to identify the initiatives already in place and draft policy and develop cost estimates. And, um, with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to invite everyone to come out this Saturday, uh, to the Eileen Wolf Rec Center, uh, for a paper shredding event. If you've got a bunch of old boxes of paper that have social security numbers and so forth on, come out between nine A M. and noon at eight eighty-four Church Street. They will take the boxes away from you. I think it's, seems like it's up to three boxes, uh, that they'll take and, um, shred them up for you and get rid of it. So, uh, everybody, please come out if you, if you're interested. With that, I yield.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to say that I'm really excited about, uh, being able to kick off the, um, Smyrna Library's mystery reader program. Um, last month, on August the twenty-third, it was really a lot of fun. It was glad to, it was good to see the parents who bought their kids out and, uh, allowed me to be their mystery reader. This is something that they're going to be doing each month, and they'll have a different mystery reader. So, I encourage the parents to bring their kids out and see who the next mystery reader is going to be. And then also want to take time to thank everyone that came out yesterday for that wonderful Labor Day, um, race, five K. race. It was so good to see all the families, um, get together. I love all the events that Smyrna does here, and we encourage, uh, we encourage all our constituents to continue to come out and, um, support the different activities that we do have. And then, uh, last on my list, I want to welcome our new, uh, deputy city clerk, Tina Monahan. And with that, I yield.
Um, Ms. Andrea Bluestein?
I found a solution for us. We're gonna go with Marilyn to Alaska next year, and that, we'll just take a tour of Alaska. So, anyway, with that, I yield.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, express my condolences to our assistant city administrator, Scott Andrews. Scott lost his grandmother, Ms. Violet Heatley, uh, who lives in Florida, so I ask that you please keep Scott and, well, who li, did live in Florida, pardon me, but I, so I ask that you please keep Scott and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Mr. Cock? Ms. Graham?
Item ten is show calls hearing. We don't have anything. Item eleven is citizens input. That one person signed up, Alec Bakary, thirty-four fifty-nine Shawnee Trail, comments?
My first comment tonight is, I'm still waiting to hear from anyone in front of me on a decision of putting a referendum on term limits. I've had many people that have asked me that would love the opportunity to express their opinion either way. I'd like to hear from someone in the next week. Secondly, I'd like to comment on this article, outrageous article in the Marietta Journal last Thursday, that the city's considering spending fifteen million on that property on Spring Road. There's questions that gotta be asked on this. Number one, do they have anybody that's going to commit to, uh, using the place, businesses like the Cobb Energy had the ballet symphony committing to days of the year? Secondly, what is that gonna offer that we don't already have in the city? That's number two. Three, the plan on when they're gonna be able to retire the bond on this fifteen million? And remember, the Cobb's Energy Center has lighting, all the amenities for dressing rooms and everything else, so if it leans towards a, a civic spot, uh, I don't see how it's gonna compete with Cobb, uh, S, Energy Center, as well as a facility over near the Braves Stadium. And also, I see speculation in the article where it says, sends, sells some of the parcels that aren't used. Do you have commitments from anybody to buy the parcels and the amounts? I see this as a pure speculation of fifteen million with not definitive answers to what you're gonna use it for, that we, again, we don't have. The city cannot speculate with taxpayer money. The bond debt in Smyrna is sixty-five million dollars. If you add another fifteen million, probably plus, that's up to eighty. We have a year and two months left before the next election, and we should be considered, uh, working on reducing the bond debt, not increasing it. The whole answer should be private enterprise. Let some other people come in and decide what to do with it. We have no qualified people to handle a project like this of this magnitude, and I find this to be pure speculation. This council should learn from Hickory Lakes and Smyrna Commons. We lost millions on that speculating, and I see no difference in this one. Please, let private enterprise handle that location, and I hope this council takes it serious to forget this idea. I find it ludicrous. Thank you.
I, I failed to ask if there was anybody running for public office, send the audience that would like to, uh, make any comments. All right? We have none. Um, there's no other business to be brought for this body. I declare this meeting adjourned at, uh, seven forty-one. Is that correct?